And direct the acting clerk to record in the minutes as so. Thank you very much. Clerk, action item, the chairperson will request nominations for school board clerk. Is there a nomination for school board clerk?
I would like to nominate Alicia and Jonathan.
Okay. Second call for nominations for school board clerk. And third request for nominations for school board clerk. Okay, hearing none, the candidate elected by acclamation and direct the acting clerk to record so in the minutes. Thank you. And treasurer, action item, the chairperson will request nominations for school board treasurer. Is there a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Kevin Easter.
Second call for nominations for school board treasurer. And third, now, third call for nominations for school board treasurer. Hearing none, I'll declare the candidate elected by acclamation and direct the clerk to record so in the minutes. Thank you very much. Announcements, the next school board meeting, the next regular school board meeting will be on Monday, February 11th at 7:00 PM in the GSL Schools Community Room 443-444 unless the board changes the meeting date and time. Acknowledgements? Are there any acknowledgements at this time?
I would just like to acknowledge our three newly aboard members and to say thank you and congratulations, Alicia, Jason, and Jonathan. Once again, there's a couple other ones that I'll do during my report, but we just wanted to say, welcome aboard. Happy to have you here.
Thank you. Public input relating to the agenda, is there any public input relating to the agenda? Any public input relating to the agenda? Okay, hearing none, reports and presentations, this evening we have Jeff Jensen, the IT director, and I'd like to have you please come up to the podium and share your presentation. Welcome.
Thank you. My favorite topic. Um, I want you to look at that first slide up there because when I was to present, I was told that I have three to four minutes, I think. But if you watch The Magic of Technology, if I change it to truth and technology after my hero Michelle, when she does truth and taxation, I get an hour. So, I know, right? And when I said that, they all said, no, no. So, spare me. All right. Come on. So it works and then it doesn't work. What, yeah. All right. So Michelle, you're gonna, oh, perfect. All right. So department summary, me, Director of Information and Technology, that means I'm responsible for the network, well, pretty much everything, I won't bore you with all the details. Underneath that, we have Mr. Morris and Mr. Shogren, they are desktop support and jack of all trades. So we do training in the classrooms, we do just about as many things as we possibly can, which if you look at the technology over the years, when I started, long ago, the phones were an analog system. We've now upgraded to a voice-over IP system, which means they are networkable. They plug into our switches, so by default, our technology department is now responsible for the phones throughout the district. Doors, and we'll talk about the doors a little bit later on in the presentation, but during the construction, for the first time, we went with electronic doors. They number 16 at this time. We can always have more, we'll probably add more, I would think, later on. But again, I'll talk more about our system that controls the door and what we can and cannot do with that. The lights, again, part of the automation system. Lights are connected, a lot of the sensors throughout the building control banks of lights, they go on and off at certain times, they dim at certain times, occupancy, we can go in and change those types of things. Again, technology has taken over that because pretty much anything now is into the network, into the cloud, all those types of things. It used to be as simple as turning on and off a switch, that's not the case anymore. TVs, we used to have analog TVs, and I keep referring to the word analog. In technology, we have come to a thing a long ago that was the sunset of all analog devices and the sunrise of digital technology. That's where we're at. With our TVs now, we have gone again, the key to that was the construction, how do we change things? So we've now integrated a ZV system, which allows us to take cable signals coming into our building, DISH network coming into our building, and by bringing it all in and encoding and decoding, we're able to distribute that out to the classroom in the form of live TV, announcements, you name it, we can do it. Audio enhancement systems in the classroom, that allows the teachers to wear a lapel microphone sound surround in the classroom, so the students sitting in the back of the classroom or the students sitting in the front get the same equal sound, and that's, that's a wonderful thing. BYOD devices, those are bring your own device. Working with Michelle, working in the administrative cabinet meetings, we felt that we're never going to get to a spot where we can hand the students district purchase devices one-to-one, but if we supplement what we're doing as a district with the children being able to bring your own device and will allow you on our network, I think it's working out great. And I'll talk a little bit more about where we're at with BYOD a little bit further on. Cameras, I think when I started here, there were 16 of them. If you look at the number now, there are 206. The 16 cameras, it was a blessing in disguise, we had a lightning strike, which took out the 16 that were here when I started. So we contacted a camera, USA Security is our vendor of choice. We're now sitting at 206, and in the blink of an eye, that could change. What I mean by that is systematically, we'll go and ask, are there any weaknesses, are there any areas where the administrative team feels we need access to see that? A good case to point out for that would be the Early Childhood Learning Center Outdoor Classroom. So it's open to the public, but when we have our students in the Early Childhood Learning Center out there, they wanted to be able to view the area where they're at, and not only that, but to maybe control a little bit perhaps of vandalism that's going on. The view from the office workstations strategically, at the secretarial stations, they have access to and view all exits and entrances to our building during the time that they start their shifts in the morning till the time that they leave. Access 24/7, our camera systems are able to be accessed by our administrative team. They are constantly taking a look at things, items that happen, things that are reported. I think it works well. We export the devices sometimes, we give those to any police agency or responding units at request. Can I get a video of that? Yes, you can. McLeod County Dispatch, that's something that Mr. Sanju and I worked very hard to do something that we felt is unique, and in today and age, I think it's just perfect. What we allow now is that the McLeod County 911 Dispatch Center can access internally our cameras. The agreement with them is that in the case of a, something happening at the school, if a 911 call is initiated, they have the ability in their dispatch center to pull up any of those 206 cameras with eyes on the building to direct the responding teams. That to me is perfect. There'll be a little bit more training going on, and I constantly am working with McLeod County Dispatch and their IT people on their side. So very exciting. Switches, this is where it gets boring, so just bear with me for a little bit. Switches, we have currently 26, and a switch is really anything that a network device plugs into. So if we break that down in the fieldhouse, we have one closet, including one switch. Junior high has three closets with six switches. Each switch has the capacity of about 48 devices to be able to plug into it. The junior high, where I say we have six, that's all brand new. So all the new construction, those are all brand new switches, all brand new closets, they never existed before. The senior high has three with six switches plus a firewall. What a firewall does is block any bad items from coming in and allowing good items to go out. We had two in the senior high, we added an additional one during construction, again, based on all the new things that we were doing. In the Lincoln Elementary, three closets with eight switches, again, we had two, we added one more during construction. Lakeside has always had two closets, and those closets contain a total of five switches. The servers, if you go down to where the IT department is here in the high school, the brains of the entire outfit, the server room, the Network Operations Center, that's where all those switches come back to. Inside that closet, the main closet at the senior high, we have three clustered host. And all that simply means we have three servers acting redundantly, so if one of them crashes, the other two pick up the slack. On those, there are 21 servers running. Each of those servers could do digital curriculum, printing, faxing, file storage, and the list can go on and on and on. Lincoln Elementary and Lakeside, each of those buildings has one server at each of those, and again, on each of those servers, they have three virtuals. A virtual just means a server running within a server. New technology, very exciting for me, not so much maybe for you. 12 standalone, and the standalones are our NVRs, so we go back to the cameras, they record 24/7, those cameras never stop recording. They house about a month, a month and a half worth of video. So if something happens, what we need is the administrators or the police department or McLeod County, anybody saying, can you export out this video from this date, this time? The answer is yes, we do that a lot. So those 12 standalones are our NVRs. Voice-over IP system, we talked about the ZV system, the announcements, those are again, servers that house and run all that digital capability. The S2 system, this is the door system. Right now, within that system, we have the ability to have three threat levels. So right now, we're in condition normal, green, Homeland Security, here we go. So green is normal, which means our doors work, they lock, they unlock, they're on a systematic schedule to allow things to come in, and at the beginning of a business day or a school day for us, they lock. Now again, that's only 16 doors, the rest of them have to be manually locked. And we work with the custodial team to, they lock pretty much at the same time the electronic one locks, everything should work fine. Next, we could go to a snow day, that's what it's referred to in the system, or a yellow alert. If we go to a lockdown, red alert, that means all doors locked. That can be done in three different areas, Lincoln Elementary Office, Senior High Office, and manually in the IT area, Command Center, where we can lock those doors down and get on the cameras, 206, and see what's going on. The access levels, this is where the rubber hits the road for us, there's different levels, green, everyone can access that has a FOB, and the FOB is that little thing you hold in the door and the light turns green, you can open the door. Yellow, only specific people can access, and red, very few. So Mr. Sanju can enter, I can enter, McLeod County deputies can enter, Glencoe Police can enter, that's it. A teacher, theirs is going to be normal. So when they come up to the door during a lockdown, it's going to say, sorry, you need to step back right now because we have something going on inside. 16 again, doors that are controlled with our new S2 system. There's going to be a test later on, so, kidding. All right, our ShoreTel system, we refer to this at the beginning as the voice-over IP. Analog systems did not allow us to say we have something going on in the science room. So our old system, if a, God forbid, Mrs. Stensved, for an example, had a medical emergency in her classroom, if she picked up the phone and called 911, or a student did, it would simply say, that call is originating from 1825 16th Street East, good luck. So when the units got here, good luck me trying to find you, because I'm not going to do it probably by the time you need me to. That's gone. So with the ShoreTel system now, 911 allows us in our new server, the new voice-over IP, to give a specific location, so if we use that same analogy, our new system will say, Mrs. Stensved called from room 330 at the Glencoe High School, please hurry. Awesome. The secretaries at the buildings, not only are they able to see the cameras, we talked about that initially with our camera system, but an alert will come up on their screen indicating that there is a 911 alert, and it will tell them who initiated the call, where the call came from, and again, using the example, it would say, Mrs. Stensved, room 330. When the units will be coming in, it's easy for us now to direct them, it's right down that middle hallway, right down at the end, take a right and there you'll find her. That's awesome stuff that we can do now. The Wi-Fi, we have three, what they refer to in technology as SSIDs. First one is BYOD, bring your own device. That's created for students for bringing in simply their own devices or staff, no access to the district-owned systems. We do not want those BYOD devices anywhere near our servers. We have no idea when the last time they did a virus update, we have no idea when they last did an operating system update, so we simply refuse to say, you can't access our file structure system because we're not sure how protected your system is. But we do allow them to use our network, and they do sit in classrooms and can do web searches and things at the teacher or whatever assignment they're working on. District, that's reserved for district-owned Wi-Fi devices, of which we have many of those. Those do have access to our servers. And then finally, we have guest. The guest is for parents coming into our basketball games, wrestling, they would like access to a Wi-Fi while they're here, we allow that, but in the case of the daytime, when I put the word throttled underneath that, we access it very limited, so that we reserve the BYOD and district Wi-Fi during the day for our students and staff to conduct teaching and learning. APs, those are access points, there are 94. 24 access points at Lakeside, 70 at the district. You have one of them right there on the top, we use Arrowhive. If you see it right there. You see it? New iPads. We, Michelle and I worked with Apple, we're very happy to announce that we brought in 600 new iPads for student use. So what we're shooting for there with those brand-new 600 coming in is a one-to-one ratio from kindergarten all the way to fourth grade. With that, we had to add 15 new carts, 17 existing carts, so that means every classroom has the ability of about 20-something, 24, 23, somewhere in there? Okay. 24. Okay. Okay. Increase of technology available to students, this is scary, when you really, when you look at the numbers. In blue, what I had Terry do, Terry's new, he started in 2014. So I challenged Terry Shogren, Desktop Support, I said, Terry, from the time you started in 2014 till right now today, tell us what we have as an increase in technology. iPads, 79% increase from 2014 to 2018, close to about 1,000 devices on our mobile device management system. Smartboards, we had an increase of 14. Desktops, increase of 10. The big one, laptops, and we refer to Chromebooks, Surface. Thinkpads, 602% increase from four years ago. That's huge. That's a lot of devices. Might be the last one. Yes. Wait, I have an hour. So we talked about this one today, that's probably the one that 602% increase from four years ago is, wow, that's a lot. So there it is, my favorite ever topic, thank you for allowing me to keep going, and I can. Anybody have any questions that I can answer while I'm captive, I mean here?
Jeff, with, with all of the iPads and Chromebooks and Smartboards and everything that you went over, the locks, the phones and so forth, how, let's see, how much room for growth does our system have? And I know that when I say system, I mean just kind of the totality, if you will, because I know all of these things are independent, but yet they kind of funnel through somewhat together and work in cohesiveness, as you've said. I know that we're not having a system that's maxed out or anything like that, but how close are we, how far away are we from needing to increase something versus starting over from scratch with the, let's say, foundation, if you will?
That's a great question. I don't think that we would, as far as the foundation piece, that's sort of when I first started here, I was tasked with taking it all the way down to its basement and then bringing it back up. We're constantly keeping an eye on it, we take things like the camera system, because digital takes a lot of bandwidth. Wi-Fi takes a lot of bandwidth. So what we do that, and not different than Waconia or Hutchinson or any of the other schools USA, we create things called VLANs. So we separate traffic one from the next. We prioritize traffic, phone traffic, priority, big time, we don't want that 911 call to be, that would not be good. So we give that a higher priority. To really talk to you on that answer, I would say that we're constantly looking. Our main switches, like for an example, that closet that I said has three switches or four switches, the main switch in there communicates to the main core switch in the senior high area at one gig, which is very fast. Its subservient switches would talk to that main one at 100, okay? So your slowdown there is going to be that one to the gig and then quickly over to the other one. Working with Michelle, we constantly take a look at it, I constantly am analyzing that. So that would be brought to Michelle as saying, we really, really need to look at upgrading our switches.
Do you need to be constantly asking your wife? Yes, I do.
That too, yes. Did that answer your question?
Yes, it did. And one follow-up question that's a little bit maybe narrowed down from that, which is with all of the additional testing that is being done on technology nowadays versus bubble dot tests and so forth, whether it be MCAs or, or whatever the standard tests are, or summative tests are, or mandated tests are, how about the infrastructure that we have regarding that as well, I mean, as we have more testing going that way?
That's a tough question. What I would say to that, Jamie, is that we're okay today, tomorrow we might not be, and I'm not trying to be flippant when I say that. It depends on those testings when they come to us, is how graphic are they? If it's something that's just a question and an answer, A, B, C, D, pretty simple. It's when they start adding the science that has, here's a presentation to watch, now guess how this formula changes by adding this to, and here's a motion picture of it, that will throttle everything down. So far, we're doing pretty good. But every time testing starts, we throw on the switch to monitor traffic. So then we're able to say, okay, instead of that 40, 30% that we're doing, we're now we're hitting 60 to 70. Those are the times where, and I hear what you're saying, Michelle, does this give technology unlimited budget? I appreciate that. No. But again, those are what we try to keep a pulse on very closely, again, not unlike any other school district, to be able to be proactive enough to go to Michelle and go, we really need to look at. We're kind of driven by the state of Minnesota and their testing, but it really, in my opinion, really kind of boils down to how much video, how much digital content they're pushing out to us.
Any other questions for Jeff?
I'll just say, thank you to Jeff and his department, they are, you know, a department that just seems to continue to get increased, you know, and you look at the, you know, the classic example is just the phones, right? That used to be run by our media center person, you know, and that's what they did. Well, anytime that you switch over things, it's now digital, which now gets put on his plate. You look at all the lights, it used to be custodial, well, guess what? It's now technology because of all the advancements that things go. And so his plate just continues to grow and to grow and to grow, and those guys have done a great job of managing with us, just continually saying, hey, can you help me on this, can you help me on that, just because of the fact that everything is dealing with technology. So, thank you, Jeff, thank you, Mike, thank you, Terry, for all of your work.
Thank you, Jeff.
I just wanted to say thank you to them too, because I know how busy you guys were, chaotically busy when we did the construction, because you guys really couldn't start your stuff until everything else was done, and you didn't have a lot of time before kids showed up, and you guys were, every time I talked to you, you guys are like, yep, it's busy, but we're doing it. So you guys were great through the whole thing, you know, because I'm sure it was probably chaos for a while. But you did great, so thank you.
Administrators and committee reports, Business Manager Sanders, would you like to give your report, please?
Yeah, I just have a few things, informational things to share with you tonight, and I just want to comment, for Alicia and John, welcome. And we talk a lot in acronyms, you know, us, you'll find the principals, Chris, raise your hand, because sometimes we get busy talking our jargon and we kind of forget that, what's that mean? And even for the rest of you, because we do use a lot of acronyms, so just make sure that you wave at us and, and stop us and to kind of catch on to some of that, so, so welcome. Couple of things that I have is lead and water testing, if you remember, we started this last fall in September, we kind of did the first round of lead testing in the EC building and the high school, kind of the priority areas for drinking water, and so we finished that round. And right before Christmas, we got the results back from, we did the next round up at Silver Lake, so we touched on those key areas. We had a couple areas that they weren't drinking fountains, but they were sink fountains, hardly ever used in the back corner of some rooms, had a couple that came back relatively high over Christmas break, Brady and his staff went up there and just shut the water off to those right away, they're probably not sinks that would even, we don't even need to use or replace the fixtures. And then we did retesting of two areas at the high school that came in a little bit higher, we were still under the required, the BPP, the parts per minute that you have to stay under, and now the second round of testing, those both had come way down, so we were fine on those. So we're going to look at our priority schedule and do another round of testing this spring and finish up those last priority areas, and then retest a couple of those areas at Silver Lake that they've either looked at or replaced a fixture on. So we're continuing to work on that, when we get to June, we'll make all those test results, we'll get them posted on our website so people have access to them. So we'll continue to work on that.
Do you know what the sink that's being used in the kitchen or the bathrooms, do they have a different level than drinking phones, a different acceptable level, or is everything at the same?
The level is all the same.
Okay.
And you can, and I don't know if Brady put any up, we talked about it, you can put up, you know, a poster by the, a sink that says, this is not drinking water. Now is that going to stop somebody from going and filling up their cup? No, even if it's posted, but that is one thing you can do to prevent or, you know, try to protect yourself or the district in doing that. But so far, ours are all under the required, except these couple that came in now at Silver Lake, but they were a couple of old sinks, not drinking fountains, so we'll continue to monitor that.
Okay.
But no, everything else, you have to follow the same, same guidelines as far as what the levels are that come out of that. Second item I want to touch on is just the federal shutdown, I know John here from the Chronicle asked this a couple weeks ago, with the federal shutdown, is there any effect that we're noticing at the school? At this point, the answer is no. Our biggest area that we get federal dollars on right now that affect us on a monthly basis is in our lunch program, our child nutrition program. And when this first came out, the federal government through the State Department had, said they had, they were funded through January, and now they've come back and they said they've reallocated new apportionments to cover at least through March. So on the lunch program, we are fine, we haven't heard any, anything on our title program or any other federal program that might, that we might have that might be affected at this point. So a lot of times, those dollars like for title are already allocated to the states from the federal government, so they, the states holding on to that money as we request payments for those. So no effect on us right now for the federal shutdown. The next item information is called HIDA, and this is a fun little acronym. HIDA is our Health Insurance Transparency Act. We are required as a school district to bid our health insurance every two years. In the past, we belong to a co-op, our Southwest West Central Service Co-op in Marshall, used to always do the bidding on the health insurance, because they are our pool, we're part of that group. That changed in legislation a few years ago, this will be our third round now of having to do the bidding ourselves. So the legislation bill was called HIDA, Health Insurance Transparency Act, they're now kind of referring it They're now kind of referring, referring to it as just mandatory bid. So that process now has been in place. Our timelines for that is the RFP, or the Request for Proposal, will be available starting February 1st. And that's a matter of collecting all the data from Blue Cross, Blue Shield to submit that and along with the rather, the bid requirements and get that sent out to anybody that wants to bid it. We have to receive three bids to be in compliant with the statute. Blue Cross, Blue Shield will bid it. The co-op will bid it itself, and PEAP is one that is required to bid it, or we have to have a bid from PEAP. PEAP is the State Public Employees Insurance Program. There are some school districts that their unions have voted to go with the PEAP program. The last couple rounds of bidding, it hasn't been in our favor, so we haven't gone that direction. So the bids are due March 22nd. We'll hope to award the bid at our April board meeting. And then we will have an insurance committee meeting prior to that. So part of the requirement of the statute is when the bids come in, they're sealed bids, when we, when I open them, you have to have a representative from the teachers' union present at that. So I communicate a lot with the teachers' union, and I think on the committee assignments, John is taking over that. So I'll send you the email. I think I'd already sent it to Donna, kind of outlining, you know, the bid process and all that. So I'll forward that on to you, and we'll go from there. So the insurance committee, as far as you're concerned, John, normally we only meet once in the year after we kind of get our renewal rates. We kind of sit down and go through that as a committee. We have representation from the teachers' union, from our 284 union, our support staff, our payroll coordinator sits in on that, Chris, and sometimes a couple others. So we have good representation on that committee that kind of goes through the bids. We take a look at what can we do to improve our premiums, you know, reduce our costs. We look at the plan, we look at the medication plan, all those type of things. And also our dental and vision plan, those type of things, if there's anything we can improve on there. So everybody's always in agreement, you know, we're trying to do the best we can for all the employees of the district.
Is that a PEP mandate?
PEAP, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, that's our current carrier, and then the co-op. So Blue Cross will bid it through the co-op, and then they'll also give us a direct bid. That's what's happened the last couple rounds of the bid process, because they know that we need three bids. So they, their direct bid usually comes in higher, and then the co-op bid is a little bit lower. PEAP, the last round was higher, but they have a very complicated insurance program. It's really difficult to understand, but we'll go through that when the bids come in and go from there and see how they look.
I wrote down that.
Okay. And the last thing I just have an update on is the parking lot a little bit. Everything is still on track. We haven't had a lot of activity because they're finishing the project scope and getting the bid plans ready to go on that. So we're still scheduled to bid, if I have my notes here, the bids will go out at the end of the month. With bids due in March, I can't find my... Yeah, we'd look at, bids would coming in the end of February and hopefully awarding the bid in March. And then we'll work on the abatement bond schedule once we kind of have that in place to get that hearing held. At this point, the latest update that we got from the, Dave Ray at AJA, is they've met, visited with the watershed district, and they're all, everything sounds good. They have a meeting next week that they'll officially approve it. And they're just finishing up a little bit more work with the city of Glencoe to make sure everything's in place. So everything is on track with that right now. Anything else, Chris, on that? I think that's just, it's just kind of in a, you know, finishing the plans right now.
Have you indicated anything? I know when we first started talking about this, oil prices were extraordinarily high. Have you indicated anything that we might see you're bothering?
Not, not as of yet. The latest estimate on their cost, it's been fairly stable with what they had said before that it would be. But I think once we go out to bids, we'll get a better, better idea of how that looks when it comes in.
Thank you.
And then I just have information on the pay equity, and that's an agenda item, so I'll give you that information when we get to that on the, on the agenda. Any questions on any of those topics?
Thanks, Michelle. Principals' reports. Mr. Butler, would you like to begin?
I will. Thank you. Good evening. Welcome, Alicia and John. You know, I'll start at the top there, and I'll highlight a few items on our written report for the elementary. Our K through six instructional leadership team went through an interesting exercise last week. And we did what is called a root cause analysis. And we wanted to get to the root cause of why, why do we, why do districts throughout the state of Minnesota and the country have a persistent achievement gap, particularly between English learners and students who are not English learners? And we took them through using a method called the five whys. The five whys, W-H-Y-S. And Toyota apparently used this way back to overtake, in the time, the American manufacturers. And it's really simple, you know, why, why are we, why are we underselling our American competitors? And they come up with a theory. Why is that? And you keep answering that question till you get to the fifth one, and eventually you'll arrive at something you can control, and they credit that simple method with the success they had back probably 40 years ago. So we use that, and our root cause turned out to be professional development. Professional development in teaching English learners, particularly in that tier one setting, which is the general classroom setting, and then also professional development around trauma and poverty. So I'm excited with a little bit of guidance from MDE to start on putting that root cause into, into an action plan that we can develop and implement. You can see dates for our individual building leadership teams. Alicia, you're welcome to come. We're meeting after school at Lincoln on January 16th, and I'll keep you updated on those monthly meetings. Lakeside's next meeting is yet to be determined. Our teachers have been taking half-days, speaking of professional development, to dig into our new literacy tool, Wonders. And a little bit further down, you can see, we had a really fun event last week for the kids at Lincoln, our Panther Paw Award winners. We did pizza and painting at Unhinged Pizza. It was like, think of the paint factory where we had lunch, and then we had, we had a novice artist guide the kids through a, to paint, and a really, really cool finished product. And then you can see where Lakeside is going later this week, up to Grand Slam and Coon Rapids with their Panther Paw Award winners. Down under curriculum and assessment, you can see Wonders, our new literacy tool. Our coach from Wonders will be onsite on the 24th, giving us some onsite coaching in our classrooms. And then toward the bottom there, under state and federal programs, Minnesota Reading Corps. The application window is open, so I'll be working on those in the next two weeks. And special education, we're working on caseloads for next year, and we're taking a close look at our space needs at Lincoln Elementary as we look at the children coming up from preschool. And then finally, on the back, I'll just mention, you know, recognition to our teaching staff, leadership teams, and all the teachers. None of this that we covered on the front could happen without them. What questions do you have for me?
Bill, what is the discrepancy model that says possible legislative action? What is that?
Yeah, I put that on there, you know, and there's been a lot of talk, Jamie. The professional organization for special education administrators has been lobbying, lobbying to do away with what is called the discrepancy model. So when you assess a child for a specific learning disability, SLD, that's one of the 13 categories for special education, you have to come up with a discrepancy for the child to qualify. And the discrepancy is between the child's IQ, perhaps we'd call that ability, and then their academic performance. So let's say a child's IQ is 90, and then on an achievement test, they get a 70. There's a discrepancy there, and with those numbers, which I'm making up, the child would likely qualify for special education services. Where we run into trouble, a student who has, let's say, an IQ of 80, and that student is working up to her or his ability, that student is not going to qualify. There's no discrepancy. However, that child is going to struggle greatly throughout her or his educational career. So sunsetting this discrepancy model would allow districts to service that child who is going to struggle, but who would get no services under the discrepancy model. Now, I will say, 10 years ago, there was talk of that being sunsetted, and nothing happened. But it seems to be a little stronger. It would just put a little more emphasis on response to intervention, all those tiers, you know, intervening in tiers one, two, and three. So I thought I'd put that on there to tweak my memory as if anything develops here in the spring. I hope I, hope I answered that.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, no, you did. And thank you for those examples, because I think that those really showed well what the discrepancy model had been, or how, you know, we responded to, or how we respond to students that come before us that have the needs. If that model sunsets, the replacement for it would be what is yet to be determined. Is that correct? And along with that, the legislature possibly with a different model, also coming with possible fund, funding and/or mandates that may or may not be funded as well?
Probably, right, unfunded mandates, right, Jamie?
Right.
What we've been told is that you would, districts would qualify students based on their response or lack of response to intervention. So it comes back to the whole topic of RTI. So if we intervene properly with fidelity and have quality data, if a child is not intervening, is not progressing in responding, then based on the best judgment of that team, the child would qualify without the discrepancy indicated in those tests. Correct. Response to intervention. Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Butler? Thanks, Bill.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Mr. Foss, would you like to do your report, please?
Of course. I'll start by saying welcome to Alicia and John as well. I'm excited to have you guys a part of the board. In the school improvement, kind of following what Mr. Butler had said with response to intervention. For staff development, we have, our next staff development day is March 4th, and the junior and senior high school is bringing in Solution Tree Resources to give us a training on exactly that response to intervention. And more specifically, how to utilize tier one interventions within each one of our Still under the school improvement topic would be the PBIS program. Our next Panther Pride Student Spotlight ceremony is going to be January 28th. In the last two months, we've also, in addition to the student spotlight, we've also been recognizing staff. And the only reason that I'm putting this in here is because I want you as a board to know how excited the students have gotten about that. The first month was picked by myself and Mr. Saboda as far as staff that we thought really have gone above and beyond in their, in their job duties. And at that award ceremony, we had opened it up to students and said, "This is really driven by you, by the students. We want to hear recommendations as far as who you feel is a staff that would deserve this award." And with the upcoming ceremony in two weeks, I have, I've gotten, I don't even know how many recommendations from students. I've gotten emails from students, and I also have gotten three full-page written recommendations on staff that should be awarded this, which, in my mind, this is really what PBIS was about. It was to recognize the positives, and not just in the students, but as a staff, you know, what are our paraprofessionals doing? What are the cooks doing? What are our teachers doing? What is everybody doing that's positive to create the culture that is GSL? Solution Focus Team is a team that we have at the high school that meets twice a month. They work on the child find process, so they identify students who maybe aren't responding to interventions that we're working on in the classroom. They refer to special ed testing or our SEAT team. That'd be Special Education Assessment Team. And also, we work with our students that are on a 504. High school and junior high leadership teams, we meet monthly. The way that those meet, we meet one week before our monthly staff meetings. And the reason for that is for myself and Mr. Saboda, we run by many ideas, so our leadership team first. Kind of when, when you've hashed out some ideas or some questions that may come from things that we are looking to implement, we work on it with our leadership team first, and the next week, we bring it to our full staff meetings, which are held here. 2019, 2020 registration process, it's scary for me to think that we're already at that time of year where we're looking to next year. But next week, we have meetings scheduled, our counselors have meetings scheduled all week, Monday through Friday, with our freshmen through seniors, to talk about what that registration process is and get them scheduled in the computer labs to register for next school year. Also, and I'm going to get ahead of myself a little bit here, but on the night of conferences, we also have a parents' get-together where the counselors will also present about registration. Panther Power Hour, I left you guys in December, speaking of some data, and we looked at mid-trimester and trimester grades to look at the effectiveness of Power Hour. And basically, what we saw is there hasn't been a drop-off and there hasn't been an improvement. Status quo has kind of just been pretty much same over the last four years. So the next step for Power Hour, in my opinion, was to implement some sort of accountability into this. And I spoke in December about how they make, you know, there is software available that you can purchase, but it is very costly. So I've developed something with our leadership team, which is just a Google spreadsheet, is all it is, with all of the staff members' names on it and when they're available during the Power Hour, to assign students. And then when we have, we have supervision, so students are in the commons area, or students are in the purple gym, or students are in the library, those supervisors have access to a Chromebook or a Surface, Microsoft Surface. They take the Surface, they pull up that spreadsheet, and they can see, oh, Mr. Bick needs John Johnson to be in his room during a lunch, and we can redirect those students into that classroom. This is something that we've just started since we've come back from break, and there have been a lot of fine tweaking that has needed to take place, but it is really starting to pick up steam with our staff. And I'm noticing a difference already in our students being held more accountable. There's less traffic through the hallways, there's more activities in the classroom, and that's, that's truly been the idea behind Power Hour since they brought it to GSL. So I'm interested to look at the numbers, maybe not so much at mid-try here, which is coming up tomorrow, but at the end of try two, I'm really interested to see what those numbers do. And then lastly, in the school improvement program is the PLC grade level meetings. We meet monthly, which is grade level, so all seventh grade staff, all eighth grade staff, all the way through 12th grade staff, meet monthly. They work together with our student assistance team and Solution Focus Team, where they report back and say, "These are some of the issues we see in our classroom. Could you please talk about this within those groups and come up with some interventions that we may use to help make them successful?" This is the same group of individuals that help identify our student spotlight award winners, where we recognize for PBIS each month. Moving on to our school and community partnerships, we're still moving forward with our Hispanic outreach program. We are trying to plan an event for the end of January or middle of February, which would take place, I think, at kind of a mutually agreed-upon place, so it wouldn't necessarily be at the school. I don't know if that has been set in stone yet, but that's something that we have, Carol Silas, Cynthia Ruiz, our whole Hispanic outreach program is working on. High School Connections Map, we're continuing to build connections with all of our 9 through 12 students, with the goal of being that at the end of the year, in a perfect world, 100% of our students would feel like they have a connection with at least one of our staff members. And just for you guys as a board to know, and I know I've mentioned this in the past, but my plan is moving forward is that this will become a 7-12 connection map, seeing as how we now truly are one campus of 7-12 with GSL. Olvea's Anti-Bullying Program, we still offer our anti-bullying program once a month during their RAP class on Mondays at the 9 through 12 setting. We also offer that at the junior high as well, but it is not necessarily on a Monday since they have RAP every day of the week. They do not have Power Hour. As I mentioned earlier, parent teacher conferences are this week, January 17th. I want to speak very briefly about the American Heart Association Redout. This was held last Friday. And this was a charity event. And this was a charity event where our student government and student activities partnered with the American Heart Association to raise awareness for heart disease. And I'm absolutely blown away with how well those students handled this opportunity. They partnered with Litchfield, they got ahold of their activities director and their assistant principal, and if any of you had an opportunity to ask...
Thank you, Mr. Foss. Superintendent Report, Mr. Sanju?
I have just a couple of things, thank you very much. The community schools, just to kind of partner with a little bit of the Hispanic outreach, our next March meeting, we will have our Hispanic Outreach Group present during that particular time to kind of show a little bit of some of the things that we are starting to do to build those connections with our Hispanic community. So, looking forward to that. And then, also, January 24th, it will be our next Community Schools Meeting, where we're going to have our students, and then McLeod for tomorrow, which is the Countywide Leadership Program, they're going to be there as well, and we're going to have our juniors and seniors, and probably around 50 adults that are going to show up. This is the one that we get about 110 people in our building, talking a little bit about different careers and things like that, and know that everybody is welcome to attend that. Just let me know, so we can plan for lunch. Also, we'll talk after this just about MSBA and work out our details, that is coming up here on Thursday and Friday, MSBA, Minnesota School Boards Association, right? We'll have that. And then, lastly, just, you know, a special thank you, you know, with our event that happened here at the beginning of the calendar year, to say thank you to our Sheriff's Department and our Police Department and for their response and their working together. The situation, I thought, was handled very, very well, and at the same time, there were things that we learned and that will get better. We will continue to have our review as we met and debriefed with our authorities. We talked about little things that we can improve upon, and that also stemmed with being able to schedule some of the meetings with them on a consistent basis, just to continue to stay up to date. We, you know, simplistically, we gave them a map that showed where fobs are going to be at. You know, it was one of those things where you kind of looked at, because there's a couple of officers that, you know, got confused in terms of, "Where's the cafeteria?", because it's a new cafeteria. And then, also, that led to things such as, here are the doors where actual fobs will work, as opposed to, you know, the many doors where you need a key. Little things like that that allow us to get better, and we're going to be doing that. And I wanted to say thank you to them for their assistance in doing that. And then, lastly, just another reminder about school closings, knock on wood, we haven't had that, but the first time that we're doing that, we will be implementing our digital day, or our digital different day, and learning about how that, and I keep, you know, keeping that on to the staff about how to differentiate, to make sure that, you know, staff, you know, that they understand that every kid in their classroom may not have internet access. And we learn about how many kids have internet access, and then we learn about the kids that don't have internet access, and trying to find that balance between things. And I think at GSL, we have a really good balance with all of that, being able to, you know, to try this technology and to try this implementation of a digital or a different day, and then, at the same time, making sure that every kid gets an opportunity to have that education on that day. So, I keep reminding families to stay up to date with that. Knock on wood, once again, we implemented this, I think, almost a couple years, two years, and we have not done it. We've practiced, and we're set, and we're ready. I think that was ultimately the sign that says, "Hey, now that you're all set and ready to go, you truly haven't done it yet." And I have to believe that at some point in time, it's going to happen, but hopefully, the weather continues to cooperate in having school as scheduled. So, that's what I have, thank you. Any questions for me?
Thank you, Chris. Committee reports? Are there any committee reports? Okay, hearing none. Approve the agenda, action item. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion, comments? I have a motion by Donna and a second by Kevin to approve the agenda. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Approve consent agenda, action item, enclosure number one. Is there a motion? And is there a second? I have a motion by Jason and a second by Alicia to approve the consent agenda. Any questions or comments or discussion?
I'll just mention, on the last one, there is a 2019 mental health contract. This is similar to what we had with the Jonas Center that we had last year, and it's just on the consent agenda. This is out of the initiative grant that we started with Stevens Seminary, and it's an, ultimately, it's a partnership with them and with our mental health team to get together and to discuss student needs and how, bringing in mental health professionals into our building to assist our mental health team, and it's a really good partnership. And so, we did this last year, it's just basically kind of a payment per time that they do it, and it's all funded through our Stevens Seminary grant.
Thank you for that additional information. Any other discussion, questions, or comment? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. There's no old business at this time, new business. Item A, meeting time and place, action item. This school board has traditionally met in regular session on the second Monday of each month at 7:00 PM in the GSL Schools Community Room, Room 443444. If required, a second meeting has been held on the fourth Monday. Is there a motion or a second or a discussion, questions, comment? And what? Okay.
Can you hear me? I hit it hard. The only thing I was going to ask is, if a board meeting falls on a band concert night, those are usually on Monday nights, for a lot of times, can we schedule that board meeting for 6:00 PM, so we had a chance to possibly get there? I know John is affected by that, myself, Alicia would be for choir. I mean, we've just got to look at the calendar and know when they are, and if we can get them for 6 o'clock. Chris actually alerted me to this, and I'd be, just ask that if any. I don't think we have to put it officially in here, but we've just got to plan ahead for it, so. Yeah. Makes sense.
Yeah, I have no problem with that. I mean, you know, we're parents too, so.
Or if you want to set it for 6 o'clock, because it'll be probably three or four, sometimes five Mondays during the course of the year. So, I'm just letting you know that you're going to find that we're going to probably tell you, "There's a concert tonight, there's a concert tonight." But it's up to you guys. I just want to let you guys know, if whatever is simpler, flexibility may be simpler than... I just don't want to get people confused. Now, what night is, you know, and even our general public not confused about, you know, the start time?
If we can announce it the month before, we should be okay.
Okay. That sounds great.
Yeah, that's good.
I know that all the, they have all the, I was just going to put it in my calendar, all of the dates I've set for the school year already, so.
And I know in the spring, they do try to push it back a half hour to give people a break. It would even be helpful for you guys to start at 6:00, but we'll just go to a month at a time then and see how that goes. That's fine.
I'll entertain a motion if somebody would like to word that, and I'll try to record that.
I so move.
All right, what would you like to move?
Our board meetings will be at 7:00 PM unless the month prior is indicated it will be at 6:00 PM.
All right, so, just in looking at the template here of item A, you're going to have the regular board meetings on, let's see, the second Monday, beginning at 7:00 PM, and meeting in the community room here? All right. With the second meeting, if necessary, to be held on the fourth Monday of the month. Okay, let me, I'll entertain a second to that motion. Do you want me to try to repeat that motion first, or?
I'll second that.
Okay. Thank you. Now, I'll give it a shot, how about that? Any other discussion, questions, comment? And then, I'll try to frame this up and we'll vote on it. Any other questions, comment, discussion? Okay, I have a motion by Donna and a second by Jason to set the regular school board meetings on the second Monday of each month, beginning at 7:00 PM, and meeting in the community room, the GSL Schools Community Room, of 443444, with a second meeting, if necessary, to be held on the fourth Monday of the month. Any other questions, comment, discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Shelley, were you able to get that too? Thank you. Item B, board per diem, action item. The school board's current approved per diem rates are as follows. A, attendance at regular and special formal board meetings was $2,600 per year. Item B, per committee meeting, $35. C, per negotiations meeting, $50. D, additional pay after three hours for committee negotiations meetings, $35. Is there a motion?
I will make a motion to keep the pay as stated.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any questions, comment, discussion? I have a motion by Jason and a second by Kevin to set the per diem rates for 2019 at the same rate as they were in 2018. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item C, appoint board committee and representatives, action item, enclosure number two. Superintendent Sanju and Board Chair Alcybin solicited board member preferences for committee assignments. The committee and representative recommendations will be presented by the Board Chair. As was stated, please take a look at enclosure number two. The proposed list of committee assignments for 2019 is as enclosed. I'd like to thank everybody, as I put that together, for their input into it, and thank you for the discussion that went with each of those outreaches from me to you, asking about interests, getting to know you as well with regard to strengths, backgrounds, and stuff like that. It helped lead me to be able to make the recommendations and the draft that I have before you at this time as enclosure number two. Any other discussion or input regarding the enclosure number two assignments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion at this time. And is there a second?
I second it.
Any other discussion? I have a motion by Donna and a second by John to adopt the committee assignments for 2019 as specified by the Board Chair and by the school board. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Thank you. And maybe we can also get the committee assignments to the administration as well, just so that they're aware now of the leadership representatives for each of the buildings and stuff like that. That would be helpful for them, now that it's kind of finalized. Okay, thank you. Item D, payment of claims prior to board's approval, action item. Superintendent Sanju recommends that the school board authorizes Business Manager Sander to make payment prior to school board approval of claims that cannot be deferred until the next board meeting, without loss to the District of Discount Privileges and further authorizes Sander to initiate and transact electronic transfers for the purpose of investing excess monies for the payment of bond principal and interest as provided by MS 1996, Section 123.35, subdivision 15. I'll entertain a motion at this time. Is there a second? And is there any additional information or discussion? Okay. Yep. Okay, hearing none. I have a motion by Kevin and a second by Alicia to authorize Business Manager Sander to make payment prior to school board approval of claims that cannot be deferred until the next board meeting as listed above. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item E, designate statutory duties of the clerk, action item. It is a recommendation of the Superintendent Sanju that the following statutory duties of the clerk be delegated to the administrative staff. The keeping of the book of minutes of all school board meetings, preparation of reports that shall include the condition of value of school property, receipts and disbursements in detail, and such other financial matters as may be called for by the Minnesota Department of Education, the length of the school term, and the enrollment and attendance of grades, and the names and post-office addresses of all directors and other officers, and such other items of information as may be called for by the Commissioner of Education. Any other information? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion at this time. Okay, I've got a motion by John. Is there a second? Thank you. I have a motion by John and a second by Donna to delegate the statutory duties of the clerk to the administrative staff as listed above. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item F, resolution directing superintendent to make reductions, action item. If the school board plans to institute changes in the educational program of Glencoe Silverlake School District 2859, the first step in that change process is the adoption of a resolution directing the school district's administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions, and the reasons therefore. It is a recommendation of the superintendent that the school board adopt the resolution for the 2019-2020 school year. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? This is typically done yearly as well. Any other questions or comments? Okay.
Is it on? Okay. Kevin? Donna? Jamie? Jason? Jonathan? And myself, four.
Alicia. Item G, set meet and confer date, action item. Traditionally, the meet and confer meeting has been held early in February to prepare a recommendation for the school board about the upcoming school year's calendar. Superintendent Sanju recommends scheduling the meet and confer meeting on Wednesday, February 6, 2019, at 3:30 PM in the district office superintendent's conference room. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second? I'll make that, okay, thanks, Alicia. Any discussion, questions, or comments? Okay, hearing none. I have a motion by Kevin and a second by Alicia to schedule the meet and confer meeting as requested. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item H, fundraiser requests, action item. The board approves requests to hold fundraisers at the June meeting and at the January meeting. Superintendent Sanju recommends approval of the fundraising requests for the second half of the 2018-2019 school year. half of the 2018-2019 school year. Is there a motion? I'll make that motion, is there a second? Discussion, this is something that typically is done, like it said here, twice a year, so this is our January time added. Typically, we put the fundraisers, we kind of clump them together so that it kind of gives individuals wanting to request a fundraiser sort of a deadline or a target date for submitting to administration for approval by us as a school board. Any other additional information to add to that?
It's just also a part of the audit process as well and so that's why this is in front of you, because all fundraisers need to be officially approved by you via the audit process.
Thank you for adding that additional information. That's an important part of the, the audit that they take a look at it too, so thank you for that. All right, I have a motion by Jamie and a second by Jason to approve the fundraising request as submitted. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item I, pay equity report, action item, enclosure number three. Every three years, the district is required to file a pay equity report with the Office of Minnesota Management and Budget. The compliance report is attached. Superintendent Sanju recommends approving the pay equity compliance report for submission to the Office of Minnesota Management and Budget. Is there a motion? Is there a second? I'll make that second. Discussion, questions, comment? Michelle, did you have anything you'd like to add or say to that?
Yep, just a couple of comments on changes. Like you read, this has to be done every three years. We have to take a look at, you know, all our positions, all our different job classes within the district and update the salary numbers and make sure we're still within the range. So the changes that we had this year, we in the past have had a job class called Health Aid. We currently don't have anybody in that position. If you remember, two years ago now, we, we now have all LPNs and we don't have anybody serving as a health aide. Not that someday we might not go back to that, but at this point, because of our needs, we have all LPNs and not a health aide. Three years ago, we also had a job that was the Panther Fieldhouse Coordinator. That position hasn't been refilled at this time, so that position is no longer listed. And then we also had Superintendent Secretary as an additional job class and because of our changes in our district office, there's nobody in that position. So those are the changes that will get sent along in with the, the equity report. So this report is done to, it was started many years ago and it was brought into place back in the day when males and females were doing the same job, but males were paid at a higher rate. So this pay equity process came into place by the state, put this in place. So it makes you evaluate and make sure you're not paying somebody doing the exact same job if they're a male, that they're getting paid higher than the female for performing that same job. You know, we're, we're limited because of our unions, you know, it doesn't matter if you're a male or a female and you get hired by a teachers union or the support staff, we have to follow the salary schedule that's in place. So most of it's, it's pretty outlined for us as we complete this report.
Any other questions for Michelle or questions or comments regarding item I? Hearing none, I have a motion by Kevin and a second by Jamie to approve the pay equity compliance report as prepared by Business Manager Sander for submission to the Office of Minnesota Management and Budget. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item J, resolution to accept donations, action item. It is a recommendation of Superintendent Sanju to adopt the resolution to accept donations. Is there a motion? Is there a second? I have a motion by Donna and a second by Jason to approve the donations as listed. Any other discussion, questions or comments?
Wonderful, and it's nice to see that they allocated to where they want it to go, you know, and it's, it's just great that it comes from, you know, everywhere in the district.
Absolutely, all corners of the district, you can see, everybody recognized there and, and individuals and companies and, and stuff, great, great support. So thank you very much to all those individuals and groupings and, and businesses. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item K, miscellaneous? Is there any miscellaneous at this time?
I would just like to say thank you to Michelle. A lot of these resolutions and your items that we have voted on, I had no clue really what they were and Michelle took the time over the phone here last Friday to walk me through the process. She took time out of her schedule, I had a moment's notice, so I want to thank you for that opportunity so when I was voting on something, I was actually going on the phone. I'm still a little bit lost, there's a few more acronyms I didn't catch, but that's okay.
Did you get bingo on your bingo card with the acronyms? Yeah, that's the true question. Coverall, not quite coverall? Just four, four corners maybe? Okay, sounds good. More to come. Any other miscellaneous?
Just for John and Alicia, I'll let you get your feedback with it for a couple months. We've probably got to sit down with, just kind of go through some of that stuff for you. I'm sorry, explaining our youth system, so I wasn't going to throw that right away after the night. We're looking at a couple months, figuring through some of your school board training stuff and then we can always sit down and talk a little bit more about our question process.
No, no, don't worry about it. She's the best at it. She can explain to you, so you can...
And, and that's a whole different bingo card. Thank you. Any other miscellaneous? I'm looking forward to a great 2019. I'd like to welcome the members on the board that are new. I'd like to welcome Jason back and I'd like to thank Don and Kevin too for their input and their support, so thank you very much. I'd like to thank administration as well for all of their support, not only of the new board members coming on, but our current board members as well. It's going to be a great 2019. We've got a lot of great things ahead. Let's go Panthers. With that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? I have a motion by Donna and a second by Alicia to adjourn at 8:22 PM. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries.